Good evening and thank you for joining us for our school committee meeting of April 12th. We have just left an executive session and we are ready to call this meeting to order. And so, actually, the meeting's already been called to order while we were in executive session. So we'll go ahead and start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And as we do with every meeting, I'll go ahead and read the mission statement. "The vision of the Wakefield Public Schools is to graduate students who are confident lifelong learners, who are respectful and caring members of their community. Our mission is to prepare students for college, career, and community by providing rich and challenging curriculum, high-quality instruction, and educational experiences that meet their individual needs and interests." For public comment, Erin, you're gonna speak?
Good evening. I'm Erin Kresos, WEA president, joined with Florence Martin, our negotiations chair, and Will Carver-Nearys, our past presidents, as they were the leadership team when Good Friday was removed from the calendar. On behalf of the dedicated Wakefield educators, I'd like to provide the community with some historical background related to the decision to close schools on Friday and require that that day may be made up on June 24th. It is our true desire that with some historical context, the conversation moving forward can be held with the goal of solving this administratively created issue while showing the appropriate level of respect for the deeply personal choices people make regarding their own spirituality and faith. We want to be very clear with the community that the WEA and the educational staff were allowed zero input into the decision made three years ago to remove Good Friday from the list of observed holidays. Though briefly discussed at a bargaining meeting on a Monday evening, the committee moved the following night to remove it disregarding the WEA concerns raised. The WEA would have surveyed their members had we been asked. The WEA would have continued to offer alternative calendar options had we been asked. The WEA would have been willing to work collaboratively to safely open schools this Friday had we been asked. But we were not asked. For a district that heavily promotes the use of data-informed decisions, it is perplexing to us that the decision to remove Good Friday was intentionally made without any. The tone of the email staff received from Superintendent Lyons last week regarding the potential closure of schools on Good Friday frustrated many of our educators, especially due to the significant advance notice many of them gave their buildings to their absence. The district has known for at least a month that staffing was an increasing and growing concern for Good Friday. As we were given no input on this ongoing discussion and ultimate decision to close schools, we cannot speak to the frustratingly late notice many of the families received. We received comments indicating that many believe teachers are taking the day because they're tired. Please know, we are tired. We're tired of decisions being made without our input. We're tired of raising concerns about these decisions while they're being made and being ignored. We are tired of shouldering the blame for the decisions that are the result of this faulty process. But please know, one thing we are never tired of is teaching. We are never tired of fighting for our students' needs and providing a high-quality educational experience for all of your children. While many of the current committee members were not part of the original vote, you can be part of the solution. As you look towards next year, you have time to be proactive. You have time to ask families and educators what works best for them. There is no excuse for this issue to continue into the future. Failure to plan accordingly and to hear the input of those impacted is a choice, but so is collaborating with all stakeholders. We urge you to make the right choice for Wakefield students, families, and educators. Thank you.
WCAT, do we have anybody else online on the Zoom for public comment? All right. Molly and Bella, right? Okay. Who's going first?
I'm gonna start. So, looking at academics, report cards we posted in iPass today. Wednesday, April 13th, students will receive their 2022-2023 course verification sheet, and you can find your child's course of request for next year in iPass on that day. Students and families can review this information and send any changes back to guidance by Tuesday, April 26th. The WMHS guidance team will also conduct an in-person college information session for all WMHS families on Wednesday, April 27th at 7:00 PM. Looking at performing arts, Saturday night in Dartmouth, the WMHS went to percussion and won a stack division with a score of 94.3 to secure the first NESA percussion championship in school history. And I'm gonna pass it over to Bella now.
Okay, so for other school news and timely happenings, on May 5th, the entire student body will participate in a whole-school assembly for our first unity day. Guest speaker Ken, I'm sorry, I'm gonna pronounce this wrong, but Nawakide Junior, AKA the Freight Hugs guy, will be the keynote speaker. The goals of this day are to bring our school community together, to think about how to move forward together in a positive direction, share a message of peace, unity, and acceptance rather than fear, hate, and divisiveness, and to have fun in the celebration of feeling safe to be who we are as unique individuals.
Awesome. All right. Any questions for our Student Advisory Council? All right, girls, thanks for joining us tonight.
Thank you very much.
Nice to meet you.
Good night.
All right. Consent agenda?
Consent. Excuse me. I move the school committee approve the minutes of April 5, 2022, school committee meeting, and accept the minutes of the March 17, 2022, and March 31, 2022, school committee finance and facilities subcommittee meetings, and the March 29, 2022, school committee policy and communications subcommittee meeting as presented.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Suzie, I'll have to obviously do it verbally, so I approve.
Okay. We can see you raise your hand.
I'm gonna turn.
Okay. Christine, budget items?
Sure. Good evening, everyone. So tonight you have the financial statements through March 31st, 2022. As we enter the last quarter of fiscal '22, it's hard to believe, we have an available or remaining balance, it's 6.29% remaining. As you see, we do continue to have lines that are going slightly over, so probably in early July, we'll be doing some budget transfers to clean up those lines within the local appropriation. We're also spending down our grants. This is the time where we're really evaluating what's being charged to those grants and making sure that we're spending down, so we can do those final reports to the state for the end-of-year report. Also, the revolving accounts are looking healthy, and we are anticipating our circuit breaker, it usually comes in the first week of April, so we're anticipating that to come in sometime this week. We'll have two more circuit breaker payments for this year. Does anyone have any questions for the financials through March 31st? Okay. And then we have the payrolls for March, there's two payrolls for a motion to approve.
I actually had a question. I was, I wasn't just having, I wasn't having a senior moment right here.
Sorry, Tom.
Nope. Thank you. So I see on the, on the special ed out-of-district tuition line, line 13, there's quite a hefty balance. Is that because we're spending circuit breaker first?
First, right. And then, right.
And then what do we anticipate end-of-year looking like for out-of-district tuitions?
We're looking to spend that down.
Okay. And we, and we will?
We will.
Yeah, okay. All right, thank you. I move the school committee approve payroll warrants number 36 and 38 as presented.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? All right. Passes 7-0. You can see Mike. Christine, anything else?
No, no gifts tonight, thanks.
Okay. So I've got one thing under my section. I was, I received an email, actually Julie Smith Galvin and I both received an email from the Human Rights Commission asking us to consider reaffirming the, a proclamation that the three committees, HRC, School Committee, and Town Council, had affirmed back in, oh my goodness, December of 2018 was when it was first put together, and then it was reaffirmed last April in 2021, and we're being asked to consider reaffirming that again now. My suggestion was that maybe that you guys wait until a new committee is at the table and that you reaffirm this kind of as a new committee with all committee members. The proclamation is the acceptance and openness among all of our citizens, sorry, the rec, a proclamation reaffirming Wakefield's commitment to acceptance and openness among all of our citizens. That's kind of the title of it. I sent all of you guys a copy of it. So we could reaffirm it tonight. You could also reaffirm it in a couple of weeks when there's a new committee. I don't have any preference, but I did think it would be kind of nice to potentially think about kind of reaffirming that yearly as new committee members kind of come in, because it really is about, and I think certainly in our schools, this idea of being open and accepting of everybody is a really important message that I think already lives in our schools, but that should be kind of affirmed by the committee. So I am open to reaffirming it tonight in our current state with all of us here, or you could wait. Go ahead, Amy.
When the committee reaffirmed it last year, Steve and Amy and I weren't on the committee.
You were not on it?
No.
Right. Okay. So that's actually, that's a good point, which is why, to me, it almost feels like it should maybe be a yearly thing anyway that the committee consider, but we certainly could do it tonight knowing that, and then consider doing it again when new members join. If...
Yeah, Suzie, if I could jump in, yeah, I think it probably makes sense to do it as soon as I do it. I mean, we could do it now, absolutely, but we should perhaps also do it at the beginning of someone's tenure, not after a year either, so just really how we want to time it.
Yeah.
I would say there's some, there's some community sentiment sort of going around. I think the reason that the HRC asked that it be reaffirmed are because of some discussions around their, some, some changing of the flag policy that they've asked, and some discussion in the community came out of that. Some things that didn't maybe shine the best light on sort of our aspirations as a community. And I think under that light, in, in light of the, you know, the student committees, the groups, you know, searching for that day of unity, I think it falls kind of right under that, and I think it's a good opportunity to sort of share our support for both, you know, the community and what our students are trying to do.
Okay. Do we wanna?
Sure.
So should I read it? How do we, how do we want to do this exactly? I feel like I should read it and then make a motion?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think it's a great idea.
Okay. "A proclamation reaffirming Wakefield's commitment to acceptance and openness among all of our citizens." This is dated April 12th, I'm gonna say. Actually, is today the 12th?
It is.
That's ironic. Okay, so April 12th, 2022. "Whereas the town of Wakefield's policies, procedures, and practices are intended to prohibit discrimination based on race, color, national origin, ancestry, sex, disability, age, religion, veteran status, uniformed military service, sexual orientation, genetic information, pregnancy, marital status, gender identity, or any other classification protected by law, and whereas it is also the policy of the Wakefield Public Schools to prevent harassment, harassment and discrimination based upon race, color, sex, age, gender identity, sexual orientation, religion, national origin, limited English proficiency, disability, or housing status, and whereas Wakefield has experienced multiple incidents of hate speech and vandalism in recent years, including the recent display of a White Lives Matter banner by, White Lives Matter banner by members of a nationally recognized hate organization, and whereas these incidents have occurred against a backdrop of increasingly violent, violence, of increasing violence against communities of color across the United States, including the recent racially motivated shootings targeted at Asian-American women in the Atlanta area, and whereas the number of hate crimes reported in the United States in 2019 reached its highest level in more than a decade, and the Centers of Disease Control and Prevention have identified racism as a serious public health threat that directly affects the well-being of millions of Americans, and whereas the Wakefield School Committee, Wakefield Town Council, and Wakefield Human Rights Commission unanimously approved a resolution dated on December 4th of 2018 condemning racism, racially motivated violence, anti-Semitism, and all forms of hate speech. Therefore, be it resolved that the town of Wakefield, through the elected members of its members of its town council..." Hmm. This is the town council version. "The elected members of its school committee reaffirms its 2018 proclamation declaring that hate has no home in Wakefield. The school committee further condemns all incidents of hate speech and racially motivated violence, both in Wakefield and across the country, and declares its intention to adopt policies and practices that reaffirm Wakefield's place as a welcoming community that values diversity and inclusion. Be it further resolved as duly voted by the school committee that this resolution be shared with town and municipal leaders in Wakefield and across our region to strengthen our collective fight against racism, hatred, institutional bias, anti-Semitism, and all forms of discrimination." So now we need a motion?
I make a motion that the Wakefield School Committee reaffirm its commitment and its resolve to the proclamation as, I mean, the proclamation reaffirming Wakefield's commitment to acceptance and openness among all of our citizens.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion?
I have a question. On, so it says like in recent things? That's what, the only thing that's kind of catching me, because it was done in 2018?
This was revised a year ago.
Okay.
So it was referring to things that had, had just happened a year ago.
Okay. And the other part of me is like, do we want to memorialize that, I guess, is the word? I don't know. I mean, every time you read it, it's like, oh yeah, that happened. Oh yeah. You know what I mean? So do we, is that something that we want to remind people of, or that we want to just remind people that we're an accepting community? I think it should be more about the, might personally, should be more about the positive as opposed to the negative, you know, that we're a welcoming community and, you know, we don't discriminate based on any of these things and...
So you agree, so correct me if I'm off, but you agree with the proclamation?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
You just feel like to make it, to make it more current, it should be brought up to date, and it should be a proclamation and not refer to past incidents? Is that what I hear you saying?
Yeah. If that makes sense. Because they updated it April 12th, 2021 to add that language.
Yep.
But then they didn't up, I su... Who owns the document?
I believe the town council does.
Okay, but it hasn't been updated. So we're like, we've already, we've already affirmed this version.
We have.
And now we're reaffirming.
So you're right, we could, right. So we could have modified it. We would have had to have modified it across all three committees. We could certainly do that.
Why do we have to be the same? Just curious.
Um, I, we, yeah, I guess we don't.
Okay.
We have been.
Yeah.
In the past.
Yeah.
That it's a, it's a tri-board kind of, or a tri, tri-board refers to finance, but, you know, it's been three committees kind of stating the same declaration.
So may I ask, and I don't know, did town council approve this? Did they do this last night?
I don't know.
Does anyone know?
I don't know.
I didn't watch town council last night.
They did not?
They did not?
Okay. So maybe we...
We wait to see if they update it?
Well, why don't we update it? Why don't we, why don't we, as an idea, why don't we affirm all, all, all of the, you know, the philosophical tenants, I think to Amy's point, and ask maybe that the policy subcommittee, you know, rewrite this to make it more current?
But we don't own the document.
For 2022, perhaps, you know, to delete things that may be points in time or, or events in time, and to make it, to make it not so time-specific as opposed to philosophy in general.
I don't know that anybody necessarily owns the document. I think somebody took a stab at writing it, and then we all affirmed it after the fact.
Yeah, because it's not a policy, it's just a proclamation, right, yeah.
The initial document from 2018 was from Peter May, Tom, and Pina, who at the time was the HRC chair.
Well, I, so originally, I co-authored the original proclamation. I was chair of the committee at the time and was one of the co-authors back in, what was that, '18?
Yep.
And then it got re, and it got brought up again with these issues that were recurring last year, right? To be more event-specific.
So I can reach out. I can reach back out to Julie and Benny, who reached out to me, to say, we are prepared to reaffirm it. Do we want to get an updated version of it?
No.
And let's see where that goes.
Yeah, and the other, if I can weigh in, that would ultimately be the first meeting of the new school committee, perhaps? We could kind of get that information lined up so that we could then take care of all the housecleaning and do this, what we wanted to do tonight, perhaps, at our first meeting with the new group? I don't know what your thoughts about that.
Yeah. Okay. I can take that action.
Sounds good.
So do you take the motion off the table?
Yeah, I would, I would...
Withdraw.
I would withdraw the motion, although perhaps, and you seconded it, right? So do you agree to withdraw your second?
Yeah. I'm okay with also saying, I do agree with what's in the document.
Well, that was what I was just about to do.
Yeah.
I was just gonna make a new motion. So I move the Wakefield School Committee affirm the basic philosophic tenets provided for in the proclamation with regard to, with regard to Wakefield's resolve to not, to not be a community that supports, you know, any of the, any of the, any of the discriminatory practices. No, that, that wasn't well-formed, I was doing it, so I apologize about that, but I think we all have, have the gist. Is that fair? That want to resolve? So I make a mo, let me, let me start over if I may. Sorry, folks. I make a motion that the Wakefield School Committee affirm the basic tenets, the basic philosophical tenets of the proclamation.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion?
So we're gonna approve the general idea of it?
Yep.
And then I'll go try to get... We're gonna have a new, okay.
I'll try to go get some formal language that you guys can take.
Perfect.
Okay. Any more discussion? Motion made and seconded, all in favor? Okay. Okay. Doug?
Thank you so much.
Or Dr. Lyons. I haven't called you that yet tonight.
We have a presentation from Dolbear this evening. It's one of the schools that we haven't heard from. I'd like to invite Principal TJ Liberty up to the table. I think we have some fourth-grade student joining us.
We have Caroline Kiran and Emily Young. Emily is our fourth-grade teacher. Caroline and...
Is our fourth-grade student in Emily's class. Before I get to them, I just want to say thank you to the committee for allowing me to speak about our amazing Dolbear Dragons at the Dolbear School. We're very excited as we, you know, get through this week. Our students have worked extremely hard this year along with our staff. I'm very proud of each and every one of them. A special thanks to Amy Lehman. We're gonna have our LAD program coming up, our Learning About Differences and Disabilities program, that I believe Walton and Woodville are also participating in. Sam Dreason is going to be presenting that, and Amy was a leader in getting that up and running, so I thank you so much. Our students are looking forward to this program on Thursday. I could do the English Learner Education update too.
WCAT, we need, we need those...
I think it was the other, there we go, so...
That's just a curveball, TJ.
Listen, as principal, you always have to be on your toes. So just a couple images before we get to our wonderful student and teacher. Our school has done a bunch of things this year. One of the things that we're very proud of is our connection to our community, and with the war on Ukraine and the crisis, humanitarian crisis that's going on there right now, I know that we all have the people of Ukraine and our thoughts and our prayers right now. We, our school, led by our PTO and a couple of our staff, had organized a little kind of material fundraiser to send to the people in Ukraine, so we did some announcements. This is one of our first graders, if we can advance a slide. Courtney Leahy was the classroom teacher that offered to allow us to kind of use the outside space, so we collected materials such as diapers, medicine that was unopened and remained in that way, batteries, flashlights, just materials that we knew that, that the people of Ukraine could really use at this particular time. If we can advance the slide. So the parent that you see here is Rusty Pennick. Rusty and his family are Ukrainian, and he helped to organize materials to be sent over to the Ukraine, and these are some of our first-grade students that helped to organize and bring the materials over to Mr. Pennick. If we could advance the slide? And some of you may know the teacher that's hugging, actually Rusty's son, Gabe, that's Courtney Leahy. She helped to, again, organize this, this great drive. So this is just one of the many things that our school is doing, but I really want to highlight our guest speakers tonight, Caroline and Mrs. Young. If we could take the slideshow off and show our wonderful Dragons?
They're behind you.
Oh, they are.
But now, but now they're in front of us as well.
Now, it helps to see them, again. Us being able to think on my toes. So Emily Young is one of our fourth-grade teachers that come to me and said, you know, TJ, I would really love the idea of kind of integrating some announcements in the morning. And I said, all right. I said, if we're gonna do this, I just want to make sure it's not, you know, we don't want to do something that, you know, it has to be consistent, it has to be tied to our core values, you know, our three Bs, be kind, be safe, be respectful. And she said, I got this. My kids and I, we have an idea. And I just wanted to share with you, Caroline, or actually Emily, could you tell a little bit more about that? And then I know Caroline wants to share with you an exemplar of that.
Can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you.
Can you guys hear me?
We can hear you.
Yes, we can hear you.
Oh, good, okay. Because TJ's frozen, so I didn't know if you could hear me.
You can hear us still, Bernie.
Is he, is he still talking?
Nope, you're good.
Oh, no, he's frozen on our screen, he's muted.
Oh, okay. Mike, can you hear me? Okay, so I guess I'm gonna, I'm gonna just jump in then. I launched it. Oh, there he is again. Okay. Just go with the flow. I'm a little, I'm horrified at how large my face must be on the wall behind you. Just gonna go with it. So, yeah, so TJ, you know, we had multiple conversations about what this might look like, and it kind of morphed along the way. It took baby steps, but... and it kind of morphed along the way, it took baby steps, but I think Caroline, I think you'll agree that it, it's taken shape and it looks really good. And I have to say that the class really did help me to kind of decide what would be included in the morning announcements, what they wanted to hear, what they thought would be, you know, cool to hear every morning, um, and we wanted to focus on, on building community as a school, so, you know, at the beginning of the year, we always focus on building, classroom community and getting to know each other and even our grade level, but I, I know at least for us, now that I'm upstairs, we don't really see the rest of the school very often at all. So we thought it would be nice for everybody to just kind of start the day on the same page, um, with the same message, and that could kind of ground us. And we have started to include things like the three Bs, some rules and expectations that everyone hears, because we're starting to come up with some good common language at Dolbear. Um, and it's good that, you know, it's really starting in kindergarten, and by the time they get up to fourth grade, that will be something that hopefully they're really fluent in. So I think it's very important to start the day off on a positive, personal, like, very purposeful note. Um, we do gratitude in class, right Caroline? Um, and so, anyway, it's kind, it's really been a hit, teachers seem to love it, and I've seen the kids give each other compliments when they come up the stairs, like, oh Caroline, you did a really nice job on that this morning. And it just does connect everyone, and seeing the fourth graders after they do the announcements, like, they're so nervous going in. But then when they come out, they're like, huh, that wasn't a big deal at all, and I think that's really important for them going into middle school to have had that feeling of such nerves, like we have now, right Caroline?
Yeah.
But you have that, that, those, that anxiety, and it's normal, and it's normal to feel that, and then to overcome it and feel so good. So it's positive in every single way, um, and, but yeah, I'm gonna leave it to Caroline. We wrote this little thing that she's gonna tell you together, so it's really said in her words. And, um, Caroline, take it over.
Yeah. Hi, I'm Caroline, and I love the morning announcements. It's awesome because we get to be the leaders of the school and set a good example for the younger kids. I think the announcements are useful because they tell the kids about school news. For example, during the Read-a-Thon, we heard updates every day about the minutes we read, and it got everyone excited about reaching the school goal. I like hearing what the lunch is every morning, too. Sometimes I decide to buy, even if I brought my own lunch, because the lunch sounds so good. Each day, we have a series of similar announcements that include topics such as hot lunch, the weather, and birthdays. But then for each day of the week, we have a different theme. On Mondays, we have a section called Cop Being Good. This is a time for students who have exhibited behavior that goes above and beyond the expectations of being a good human. For example, yesterday, we highlighted someone in second grade who makes a point of going into the kitchen after lunch every day and thanking the lunch lady. It is really about character, kindness, and hard work. On Tuesdays, we have a trivia question. Today's trivia question was, what can be broken but has never held? A promise. On Wednesdays, we have a joke of the day. Tomorrow's joke will be, why was the Easter bunny so upset? Because he's having a bad hair day. Quote is meant to inspire everybody. Sometimes it's just for the teachers. This Thursday will be, one person, one, one person can make a difference and everyone should try. John F. Kennedy. And on Friday, we end the week with Fun Fact Friday. Some of our most recent fun facts have been, did you know that the opposite sides of a dice always add up to seven? Do you know that slobs have four noses? Do you know that gorillas burp when they're happy? This Friday will be, do you know that your fingernails grow faster when you're cold? The last thing I really like about the morning announcements is the Pledge of Allegiance. Saying it as the school over the loudspeaker brings us all together, swear you're united. That is why the morning announcements. And I hope you enjoy my presentation, and thank you, Ms. Young, for starting the announcements up for the whole school.
Caroline, nice job, my son!
Can you tell why I love going to school every day?
You guys did great.
It's all them. Caroline, you're awesome. I'm gonna have a job for you. I'm gonna put you right on the faculty. Hey, does anybody have any questions?
You'd like them to come every meeting?
Caroline, what do you think?
And do announcements for the school committee?
Do an announcement for the school committee?
I can do that.
Caroline, what was your school goal for the Read-a-Thon?
Um, a hundred thousand minutes.
Wow, and you made it?
Uh, yes.
Brilliant. Good, congratulations.
That's awesome.
Thank you.
Very proud of my.
To be clear, Caroline could have reached that, um, that goal all by herself. Tell her to put her books away, constantly. Good kid, Caroline.
Yeah, that's great.
Thanks, Mr. Liberty.
No, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you both.
Thank you so much, well done.
Thank you so much for the opportunity to come talk.
Thank you so much. That's what it's all about.
Absolutely.
Great job.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks, T J.
My goodness, that's a tough act to follow. No pressure.
No pressure.
She was like, I support for a second man.
Ah, she, she did quite well. And so, uh, next up, we, we would like to invite up Colleen and Kara to talk about, um, our English learners.
So I'll just, um, do a quick introduction. So we have Colleen Onas here, who is our, one of our elementary ESL teachers, and she also serves in the role as ESL coordinator, um, to support, um, central office with the administrative aspect of things. And Kara Zabrowski is our ESL teacher at the Galvin Middle School. So, um, they were so great to come here tonight. Um, I, I think we, we all felt that a couple of different questions had come up in, um, past meetings related to our English learners, and we thought it would be good to give the committee an overview, and a chance to ask any questions from two of our, our district experts, so I will pass it over to both of you.
All right, awesome.
Thanks, Kara.
So, um, first of all, thank you, everyone, for inviting us here today. We're so very excited to share everything we know about the E L E program.
Paul, the, the slide deck is behind you.
Yeah.
But we can ask Brian, so excuse me.
Yeah.
Ryan, could you put the slide deck on the, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, awesome. So you could go to the next slide. So, um, as many of you probably know, in, in the education field, we love acronyms, um, and in ESL, we love acronyms even more. So we're gonna talk about a lot of acronyms tonight. We felt it was important to kind of define those, just so everyone knows what we're talking about when we use them. So the most common would be ESL, which obviously is English as a second language, and we usually use this term to refer to the subject matter itself or to the department. Um, in EL or L is the student, the English learner. Um, S E I is Sheltered English Immersion, which refers to the program that we use to teach English language learners. Um, a FEL or F E L is a former English learner. Those are students who, um, have met proficiency in English and have exited the EL program. Um, E L L is for English Language Learner, which is a term, I put this on the slide, just if you've heard this term before, this is kind of an outdated, um, acronym. We kind of dropped the language in, in the word E L L, and now we just say English learner. Um, kind of an emerging term would be Multilingual Learner, um, and that's because, um, we're trying to look at students more in an asset-based way. So instead of looking at them in, as what they're lacking, we're trying to look at what, what assets do they already have. So, um, it hasn't really caught on completely across, you know, the state, but I think it's definitely emerging term, so we might see that more often. And then finally, English like, Language Proficiency, so when we say E L P, we're referring to their sort of level in English. So you can go to the next slide. Um, so here's an overview of, about who our students are. Um, we have a total of a hundred and eight E Ls across the district currently, and you can see a breakdown by, um, grade level. We also have a list of, um, the languages spoken currently by our English learners. There's currently sixteen. Um, there's more if you include the former English learners, but just for simplicity, I stuck with just the English learners currently. And I put it in order of, um, how common the language is, so Spanish and Portuguese are our top two languages. Um, and some of the languages toward the end of the list may be spoken by only one student. Um, and so about seventy-two percent of our E Ls speak either Spanish or Portuguese, and they're pretty neck and neck, so. Go to the next slide.
And if I can just add, I think we're, we're so fortunate as a district to have both Colleen and Kara who contribute to, um, supporting those families with, um, Colleen with Portuguese and Kara with Spanish. So they often jump in a lot on parent meetings, um, to support that translation. I know you won't pat yourself on the back.
Um, so this is a breakdown of our ESL department. So we have one at Woodville, one teacher at Dolbear, um, one teacher who goes between Greenwood and Walton, um, one teacher at the Galvin, and a point-five teacher at the high school, so a total of point, four point-five teachers across the district.
So, you know, one of the things that we talk about in our meeting, Colleen and Kara, is, is just kind of how things have changed over time.
Yes.
So just a context for the committee or anyone that might be watching, um, I started here, this is my seventh year. When I started, we had two, um, ESL teachers, right? And so two went to three, three went to four, um, and as you can see now, we have four point five. And the four point five that we have are stretched across all levels, but you'll, you'll see more in their slide deck, so.
Um, so I just wanted to talk about the WIDA consortium, but just because we're gonna refer to it a little bit throughout the slide and, um, the slides. And I just needed to build a little background. So it began as a consortium between Wisconsin, Delaware, and Arkansas. Um, they received some kind of assessment grant after No Child Left Behind, so around two thousand one. And the purpose of the grant was to create some sort of standardized assessment for English learners, because at that time, um, you know, different states were doing completely different things. Um, so over the years, the consortium has grown to forty-one states and territories, so Massachusetts is a WIDA, um, state, along with many of the states around us. Um, and so it just has standardized E L P levels and assessment tools across all the states. So you can go to the next slide. Um, so here's the WIDA levels that we use in Massachusetts and all the WIDA states. Um, level one would be, you know, beginner student, newcomer student, um, whereas level six would be considered like, like a native speaker. And usually about level five, they're ready to exit the program. Um, this is our identification process for, um, English learners in Wakefield, and actually, across the state, it's, it's a standard process. So for every parent enrolling their child in the Wakefield Public Schools, we give a home language survey, which again is standardized across the state. Um, it asks parents, what are the languages spoken in the home, what are the languages the child is exposed to, and also how often the child is exposed to or uses that language. So based on the results of the survey, if, you know, if they put any language other than English, we would do one of two things. If they're, um, a kindergartner, or if they're new to the state of Massachusetts, or to the, to the, um, country in general, we would give them an English screener. So for kindergarten, we give the W A P T, and for grades one through twelve, we use the WIDA screener. Both of those are, um, WIDA products. Um, and if they were previously enrolled in a Massachusetts public school, we would, um, not screen them because we would assume that they were screened at the previous school. We would reach out and then wa- find out if they were EL, F E L, and what their appropriate level is. Um, so once the student, once we find that information about the student, we would place them in our S E I program, that's the Sheltered English Immersion program. Um, if their level's one through three, um, it's recommended that they receive ninety minutes a day of direct ESL instruction. And if their level's three through five, it's recommended for forty-five minutes. So there's kind of an overlap, overlap for level three. Um, and that's just basically, if they're a foundational level three, if they're kind of a lower, on the lower end of three, it's recommended that they receive ninety. If they're sort of reaching closer to level four, you can give them forty-five. It's kind of open to whatever's best for the student. Um, we notify parents that the student has been placed in an S E I program, and, um, we also notify them of their right to opt out if they want to. Um, and we do have a few parents that opt out, but the vast majority of parents, um, accept the program. And, um, we monitor all the students yearly with the access test, um, which is like the standardized test, again, by the WIDA, um, consortium. And we use that, the results of the test to monitor their progress from year to year to decide what we should do with them next year, whether they're ready to exit, or what level they should be. Um, so the process for reclassifying an EL, which is just a fancy way of saying exiting them from the program, um, they must meet a minimum criteria on the access of overall score four point two and a composite literacy score, so their reading score plus their writing score together must be a minimum of three point nine. Um, so that's just the minimum, but we also take into consideration their grades, their classroom performance, any other local data we have about the student. And it's a discussion between the classroom teachers and the ESL teachers to see if they are truly ready to exit the program. Um, so once they are reclassified, we consider them a FEL or an F E L, and we must monitor them for four years. Um, so that means that the ESL teacher checks in twice yearly with their classroom teachers. Um, and if they were not making progress, um, it's possible that they could be reclassified as an EL. They could be put back in the program if necessary.
So with all of that factual information about the program, um, I think it's important to kind of state what ESL education is versus what it's not. And it is, what it is, is it is a content area of its own, where teachers follow a, a teacher-created curriculum. Um, it is not a study hall or academic support, and it's not translations. Uh, how is it, is the classroom structured? We follow, um, an S E I, which is Sheltered English Immersion, where students, depending on their level of English language proficiency, they receive forty-five or ninety minutes a day with a licensed ESL teacher. Um, we also do a lot of co-planning with general education teachers to meet their, the needs that the students are working on in their general ed classrooms.
Um, so we are working on a curriculum map this year, so it's kind of a work in progress, but we just put a little example of, um, this is the elementary example. So there's three, um, elementary ESL teachers in Wakefield, and we're meeting regularly to, um, put together a curriculum map of what are the expected, skills and things that we can work on for each grade level and, um, different levels of proficiency. So this is an example of a kindergarten, um, of our kindergarten map. Um, and it's something we hope to expand on over the years and kind of grow it and expand it and make it more thorough.
So one way to consider the support that students get in this space, or the direct teaching that they get in the space, it's almost like a school within a school, right? So you can see the teachers in their spaces with students, the relationships that they develop with the small groups of students are so, so significant, it's really amazing. So not only are the kids part of their larger classes, but they're also connected, fiercely connected to their teachers. And I think that you will see students often go to their teachers, especially at the elementary level and middle school level, straight away, um, and often will be a little reluctant to, uh, be reclassified or to move out or move away, so. And they won't tell you that, but I can tell you that pretty, pretty clearly.
Um, it's a bit more of a challenge at the secondary level because we can't always group students by grade level, but as we have an increase of L students in the future, I think it'll be a bit easier. Um, so I have an example of a map where it's not really by grade, but more of proficiency. So I have created an example of an introduction unit and have had, down at the bottom, you can't see it, but there are modifications so that things could be, scaffolded, or scaffolded, excuse me, or differentiated. But, so this is an example of a unit where students would be, um, considered newcomers, where they're new to the United States, and they are learning about, um, the alphabet and letters. Um, and it's a challenge to kind of make it into that secondary level, so it's not seen as childish. So with family and community engagement, that's something that we also have been working on in building roadmap, um, for family engagement. Um, all communications that are sent home are translated, um, to the best of our ability. I know Colleen's, uh, has Portuguese as a background, and I have Spanish, so that's helpful. Um, when it comes to other languages, um, we really kind of rely on Google Translate, which has actually come quite, quite far in the, in the, in the current years. Um, and it's all about building a trusting relationship and support that goes beyond the school. I know that, um, I receive a lot of emails, um, often asking about helping to set up doctor appointments, um, being, like, how to get involved, like, how to get their child on a soccer team, or how to get a library card. Um, so we really are seen as resources that go beyond the classroom, and we want to kind of like, and get, you know, dive more into that, and being able to have. and being able to have more resources available for our families.
So we also offer, um, summer programming for our English learners. We sort of piggyback off the Wakefield Academy Summer Program. So the students are integrated with all the other students in the program. It's for K to rising fifth graders. It's free for EL families because it's funded by Title III grants. We do hire an ESL teacher. So students would be, for example, with the Gen Ed kids for like art and science and the fun activities that they might do in the summer program. And then they might get pulled, kind of similar to the regular school day, with the ESL teacher for some literacy work, um, some reading, some writing. And we also fund transportation, um, for the students to the middle school with Title III grants, which is really important because transportation is usually a big, um, issue for most of our families. So kind of like Doug touched upon, um, our program has grown or the students have grown a lot over the years. I've, I started working here in twenty, in twenty sixteen, so that's kind of as far back as the data that I had. So at that time, we had sixty-two students. And, um, about seven percent of our students were level one or newcomer students. So we had some, but it really wasn't a, you know, a dominant group. And as you can see, it kind of steadily has grown over the years with kind of a dip in twenty twenty-one, which is really interesting and you can probably imagine why. Also, the percentage of newcomers dipped, um, in twenty twenty-one. And then we've seen a sort of a post-COVID surge, um, for twenty-one, twenty-two. So we are now up to a hundred and eight students and we have thirty-five percent of those students, um, newcomers. So knowing that, um, you know, the ninety minutes versus the forty-five minutes, it, it's a lot more time, it's a lot more demands. You know, as Kara mentioned, we do sort of a lot outside of teaching too, just like helping families, communicating with families. So it's just a lot, a lot, um, different. So we did add a point five teacher at the high school for this year. But other than that, we've pretty much stayed consistent, um, since I started working here.
So, so if I can add to that?
Yeah.
So the number of students do not equal the number of teaching minutes. It's dependent on what level they are. So if they're a level one, two, three, um, they would receive essentially two periods of instruction a day in an ESL classroom, right? If they were a level three, four, five, they would receive one period a day. So essentially the number of students doesn't dictate the teaching periods or the number of teachers we need. It's the level of the students, right? And districts, uh, it's really difficult for districts to kind of pivot and, and kind of pick up these additional periods that are required. And so I will also say that it is also exceedingly difficult to hire an ESL teacher in this current market, right? When Colleen came to us, you know, we interviewed probably six and we thought we would just, we're not going to be able to find someone. She came in, I think the interview is over in about ten minutes. We thought this is great lottery win, um, but we've been very, very fortunate. Kara has been, you know, great in leading the space, you know, and we've kind of added to the staff. And we, we also, just for reference too, you know, I, I talked about where we, where we were a short time ago. If you were an elementary student and you had ESL needs, you would go to Woodville, no matter what district you lived in. So the notion of developing relationships and social language was kind of off the table because you would be grouped with kids that you didn't, were not in your neighborhood, that you wouldn't interact with. So one of the first changes that, that Colleen made in coming here was she just asked, can we just put kids in their homeschool? It's a, it's a no-brainer, but when you spread kids out to four different locations and then you kind of have the multiplier of the periods that they need, it just equals more teaching periods. And, you know, Colleen's position was, we'll make it work. And, and they've been doing that ever since, which has been amazing, so.
Thank you. I just wanted to say too, about the hundred and eight students, we started the school year with, I would say, between eighty to ninety. So that's important to know too, I think, because, um, you know, we, we submit SIMS data to, um, DESI in, um, October first. So, you know, and a lot of things, a lot of factors are based on that, like funding and, and so it's, it's like we can't keep up with, things are just happening so fast and we can't keep up with it, but, um. So we were just thinking, you know, with the increase in students, what does this mean for Wakefield? What does this mean for our department? So we, we were able to add, as I said, a point five for this year. As Kara kind of mentioned, we can, the, we can group students more easily by proficiency level because we're, we have a larger group for each level, for each group. Instead of grouping, you know, having a sort of a smaller group with many different levels in that group. Also, once we cross the threshold of a hundred ELs in district, a couple of things change for us. So we gain control of our Title III grant management. Previously, because we had fewer than a hundred students, um, the SEEM Collaborative would have control of our, um, Title III grants. And they would pull, I think it was like they would get money from Wakefield and other small districts around us and then sort of distribute the money in that way. And now we can gain control of that grant management. We also will have to establish an LPAC, an English Learner Parent Advisory Council, which is similar to a CPAC, which I'm sure you're all familiar with. So that's something that, um, I'm going to have to start working on over the summer and figure out how to do that for next year.
So just, just for background as well, just like our special education programs are assessed by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, so too during our coordinated program review, they call it, and now they call it a tiered focus monitoring, when someone from the department comes out and kind of checks on the instruction, the record keeping, the assessments, how, the progress of students. Our ESL program or our EL program, um, is overseen and, and the, that oversight happens during our TFM opportunity as well, which will be happening this coming year.
So moving forward with supporting the growing population, um, parent support and having family liaisons in addition to a teacher-parent liaison. Maybe possibly, we talked about like having, um, choosing families and giving them, having them paid to be a point of contact for new families that are moving into the area. We spoke about the possibility of having classes available, English classes, that is, available for parents so that they can come and feel more confident, um, when they do come in to, uh, participate in any type of event or even just walking into the school building, just to gain that confidence. We have existing bilingual teachers that do support outside of teaching, um, and that includes with new enrollment. I know that I have personally helped with enrolling new, um, kindergarten students as well as translating documents that do go home with the parents and onboarding new families. And the GM, the GMS showcase, just having, um, supported and been there to translate and help, um, parents so that they do participate as well.
Kara, can I just jump in? Just, I really want to highlight the collaboration that, um, you've had, you know, just more sort of the middle school, just around with the counseling staff and the student support team at the middle school. Kara's really been instrumental in highlighting, you know, the need to support social emotional needs of our English learners and trying to work with the counselors on, um, you know, just addressing those needs and having the appropriate translation tools to work effectively with students and families. Um, and I know Colleen has been doing some research as well on additional translation tools. Cause our translation never feels like it's good enough. Keep making it better. So we're just been investigating different tools and programs and, um, local businesses to help with documents because, um, you know, we're getting better every year, but we still don't feel, um, like we're, where we need to be in terms of, um, translated documents and, and services.
Let's leave that up with any questions?
So the program, it looks like it starts in K. Is that because we don't have a need in pre-K or it's not offered for that level?
So it's not required in pre-K. We are required to identify students, um, in pre-K as English learners. We would use the same process, um, except we would use something called the pre-LAS. So it's basically just a, um, age-appropriate language assessment. But we are not required, we're actually not required to give ESL instruction in kindergarten either. But I don't, we don't feel that's the, you know, we feel like it's best to give it in kindergarten, so we do. And the students in pre-K, um, still would be reassessed entering kindergarten.
But they could still get some services or help if a family came in that was in need in that age?
Yeah, I mean, um, if, if, uh, any of the teachers or, um, the principal at Doyle would need, you know, the, the help that Kara and I give, sort of like the extra help that we give, um, we would definitely help in that way. Uh, we, we don't really have a teacher that goes there and gives any kind of like direct instruction or anything like that. But, um, I do go once yearly just to, um, identify any pre-K EL students that we have.
We do, you know, talk to Shan Blacker, there are definitely, uh, families in need, families, um, whose first language is not English and, and need support. So the translation support would still be available for families to help with just access and participation. And as part of our teacher certification requirements across the district, this has been in play for, for a while now, over ten years, the SEI endorsement that's required by the state that all of our teachers to maintain their, um, certification, participate in, in SEI class to be able to have, um, some level of understanding for how to best, um, support English learners in the class. So there is that, um, which, um, the district has been great about, um, in prior years, offering to our teaching staff every year. So, um, they're able to obtain that. And it's built into new teacher programs lately, but anybody who didn't have it, um, we had offered that. So we're pretty, um, well-certified across the district in that, in terms of that.
And then, so can you tell us like, what is a day kind of, or a class kind of look like? Is it multiple languages in one and the teacher is teaching in English, I assume, because it's not all the same language? Can you give it just kind of an example?
So it's a little, it might be a little bit different at different levels. But, um, in general, the SEI Sheltered English Immersion Program, um, to kind of give you context for that. So in the state of Massachusetts, different districts can have different programs. So they could have, um, a, like a transitional bilingual program, for example. So if you had a large group of students who speak Spanish in the district, you could have, um, a bilingual program where they're learning Spanish content and also English at the same time and then maybe tapering off the Spanish and, and so forth. So in, in Wakefield, we only have SEI, which is, it's ESL instruction with the ESL teacher plus, it's called Sheltered Content Instruction with the, a content teacher who's also SEI certified, um, like Kara had mentioned. They have to take like an endorsement course to get that certification. So, um, at the elementary level, what that kind of looks like is, um, you know, students are mostly, um, with the classroom teacher, of course. And I pull them in small groups, um, usually during maybe a win time, the what I need time and intervention period. And then if they need more like ninety minutes, I might pull them during win and also during an additional time, maybe during reading or writing. Or I might go into the classroom, um, during that time and sort of help them in the classroom. So at my level, I do, I usually group students by grade level because I think there's can often be like a big difference between, you know, what kindergarten's working on in second grade, even if they're, you know, the students at both levels are level two English language proficiency, but a level two kindergarten is way different from level two second grade. So I group them by, um, grade level. And then, um, I do, um, have students across grade levels if they're newcomers. So currently I have a brand newcomer first grader and a brand newcomer third grader. So they're both really working on very basic English. So I do put them together because they're kind of working on the same skill in that sense. So it's kind of a little bit, um, different pieces for different circumstances. And then Kara might be a little different at the.
And I think too, um, when you asked about if it's, if it's all taught in English, I feel like, you know, education is always evolving. And I, you know, ten years ago, I was told to never speak Spanish in the classroom. And now it's, it's, oh, if you can, then by all means do it. So, um, sometimes it depends on, you know, um, I'm very mindful of, of the students that I have in the classroom because I can't speak every language. So I try to make it fair. I wish I could. But yeah, and so same with at the middle school level, like Colleen said, it's a little bit easier to, um, put them by grade level. Just kind of like the difference in age, I, I, it's, it's hard to have like an eighth grader and with like a fifth grader in the same class. So I try to, I do it very similar to the elementary level as well.
Whereas at the high school, um, they are grouped across grade levels and they're grouped by proficiency. So there might be ninth graders and twelfth graders in the same class if they're all like level one, for example.
So interesting.
So if I can, I can also add, one of the most brilliant things to, to watch our teachers do is when we get a new first grader that's a level one, um, Courtney just got a student, right? And who speaks Portuguese?
Yes.
And to take, um, a third grader? And, you know, to pair them up, right? Someone who has the language, who's been here. And you'll see a level one person and Colleen will work with the classroom teacher and they'll kind of just kind of check out, okay, who has the language? Who can we connect to watch, you know, a first grader connect with a third grader? Just be able to connect by language and just open that door to have another person in the school that has your language that can become a go-to and can translate for the teacher and come in. And we've actually had, uh, students come into class and a third grader join a first grade class for a little while just to be, you know, um, a second, just to support a student. And, um, it's really just one of the most amazing things that we do. It's never publicized, but I mean, it's just really, it, that's just about being creative and innovative. That this is what they, this is what.
If I can add to that, Kara, I know, um, you know, at secondary too, so that's an example from elementary. And at secondary, Kara and Marty Nevada at the high school have, um, focused on a goal all year of connecting the Galvin students and the high school students, kind of like a Penn Pal type program. Which again, just builds community, um, among the students for additional support, so it's great.
Sorry to cut you off.
It would be interesting to see a breakout of the hundred and eight, what level they're at right now.
Every single level, yeah.
Like is it more like heavy one, two, three or heavy four, five, six, was it?
Thirty-five percent are level one.
Yeah, I know that thirty-five percent are just level one, so that's not including level two.
And where they, is it, I mean, I saw the numbers at the beginning, elementary numbers seemed higher than the other two levels, right? And at what point do you decide like this student can't move to the next grade or, or is that, or they automatically move?
Yeah, we, we wouldn't use like their lack of English proficiency to, um, not allow them to move on. Since I've worked here, I don't think we've retained anyone that I've seen personally. So, but I think there would be like a lot of other factors if we did retain someone. Maybe like if they weren't able to attend or something for a long period of time or something like that. But yeah, they generally move on to the next grade and we just look for ways to support them.
Thank you.
I had a question. So, so a lot of these students, I assume, have parents or families who English is also a second language for. And, you know, there's a lot of things you can do in school and forgive me if you went through this and I just missed it. But as far as when they're outside of school, could you kind of go through some of the key things you try to focus on to further their education of English?
What we do for our students, students outside of school?
Yes.
I don't know, I feel like.
I mean, I always tell my students to listen to music and, and you'd be surprised at what they pick up on. Definitely listening to music, they, listening to like, just engaging in the culture, um, really is, is very beneficial for them.
We also.
You know, I've heard people, they also, you know, watch TV, uh, in some ways, you know, not that you want to have your kids watching TV all the time, but this is probably a good use of TV, I imagine.
Yeah.
I've been surprised at some comments and, and phrases that they've, and I'm like, where did you, where did you hear that? Like you said that perfectly and it's usually from Spider-Man or something that they're watching. So it does, I mean, it, it does help.
We also encourage families to, um, connect with their students in their first language. Like so read them a book in Spanish, for example, um, and just ha- or storytell in your first language. Even just can, you know, keeping the first language alive at home is actually beneficial for the student, um, in learning a second language. Because, um, you know, the more vocabulary they have in their first language, the more concepts they have in their first language, they can transfer all those skills to a second language. So, um, so I think a lot of times, you know, families will be like, oh, I'm sorry, we only speak Spanish at home. And we're like, no, no, keep doing that. Like keep, like you want some books, can we get you some books? And we have, we do have like Spanish books, for example, that, you know, I let students borrow. And I'm like, go sit, you know, read this with your mom and so that's really important too.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
I just, I just had a couple of questions, but I wanted to say, um, how much when you started off that you were addressing the fact that I, I feel like you teach English sort of as an asset and not as a deficiency. And I think that's. And I think that's such an important perspective to sort of impart on the students that come into your, you know, your space because they're, they're not deficient in any, like they're actually almost, they're picking up their second language when so many of our populace just have the one. So just even the space you're starting from is, is so much better than sort of, I think, what I'm used to historically. And in our, I think I know your third grader because I think he's in my son's class and he's at a bus stop. And he's great. And there's also another kid in my son's class who also speaks Portuguese. And so I think that language aspect has been taken into the classroom because it's coming to my dinner table. And so I just, to give you like anecdotally, just like it, it comes out and it comes back home like with every other student. So when I say it's an asset, it's not just them, it's an asset for the community, for the class. So the work is just so important. I was curious on sort of numbers and data, just an average of like how many years might a student spend like in the English language program before they become a, an FEL?
Yeah, so statistically it would take about five to seven years. This is just based on, you know, academic research, five to seven years to achieve academic English. So that's kind of an average. And I would say that that's probably accurate for our students as well, spending about. Some of them might be a little bit less than that, you know, an exceptional student or maybe they had, you know, they had some proficiency coming into the school, so they might spend less than five years. And then we have some students that are going to spend more than seven years. But I, so I would say five to seven is a good average.
And then secondly was you, you had mentioned that you do have students that will transition to the FEL, but then you track them for a little while, four years and keep eyes on. And then there might be a case where they, they fall back into the, the EL program. Is there any, I assume you look at maybe what the factors might be that would, that would cause that to happen? And are there sort of ways to mitigate that? Or are there, you know, things that you're looking at, tools to sort of eyes on and then try and put supports where they're needed?
Yeah, so there's kind of a caveat to them being put back in. So the caveat would be that it would need to be that they were not making progress specifically because of language proficiency. So we have to look at, okay, well, why, why isn't the student making progress? And again, what are, what are things that we can do to help them, you know, outside of, of English learner program? Because it could be that, you know, they're struggling with homework or they're having an issue at home or, you know, it could be a million other things. So, so yes, it's kind of a process. There, it would be a conversation between a team of teachers and principal and talking about what is really going on with the student and what would be the appropriate services for the student. So maybe it isn't EL, maybe it is, but for them to go back into EL, we would have to determine that it was specifically language that was holding them back.
But your, your strategies to sort of assess that might be just equal, like unparalleled with any other academic sort of challenges that, that any other student might face?
Yes.
Thank you.
So one of the things Cara said, and you alluded to this Stephen, is this notion of not looking at not having English as a deficit, but looking at it as an asset, right? And, and, and this also ties in with the work that Cara is doing with Aaron Manzi around this kind of seal of biliteracy. You know, we're heading in a direction where we want our students to be literate in two languages, right? Like this is a standard that's not unreasonable and, and is a goal. And if, if we didn't highlight this tonight, you know, Aaron Manzi would be difficult, excuse me, would be disappointed if we didn't bring this up. But it also ties into what Cara and, and Colleen are talking about in regard to, they want to promote, right? Not the hiding of your native language, but, you know, in parallel bring it up. You know, Mike is joining us tonight from India and I'm sure in his travels, you know, how many, Michael, how many people do you cross paths with that have at least two languages? So it sounded like a big number. And so, yeah, and so, you know, when, all you need to do is.
Sorry, I apologize, a ton, thirty percent.
Yeah, and so, I mean, that's, that's what we are preparing our students for and that's what we need to think about. And these, it, it starts with, with teachers that are doing this work. And, and they're amazing, right? And so I don't think we can thank you enough for the work that you're doing and how flexible you are. And I know, please, doctor's appointments are not in your job description. And we know that this stuff just happens naturally with the work that you do and, and for us would like to say thank you.
I have one more question, sorry. I was, why a point five at the high school when it seemed like there was enough students to justify a full headcount? Are they just more proficient at that level?
The, I think you can tell there's a desire for maybe a little bit more support at some point, which I understand. But kind of like Colleen said, the, the population did grow at the high school from when we were originally breaking it out. We did carry Cara Zabrowski, sorry, we're both Cara with a K, so it gets confused. Cara Zabrowski used to split Galvin and the high school herself. So we knew that that was a lot and she did a fabulous job, but it, it was a lot. And we saw that the increases happening across the district. So kind of trying to get to that place of a one point O at Galvin and then inching towards, an ideal would be a one point O at the high school, which, you know, we've talked about at some point. So it's kind of a starting point in our, our mind, but.
The teachers that we have that are teaching these, are they also trained, I guess trained, I don't know if that's the right word, but for students with special needs or how does that work? How do we support that?
Yeah, so we don't have specialized, I personally don't have specialized certification and I don't think any of our teachers do. And that's definitely, it's definitely a tricky thing, you know, it can be difficult to sort of piece out. When a student is really struggling, is there something else going on? Is it just language? Is it something more? So yeah, it can be really tricky. And we do have some students that are duly identified as both special education students and English learners. And they are, you know, entitled to both services and one doesn't replace the other. But, but yeah, it's definitely a process trying to find out if it's something more.
It's, it's, it is a fine line because like we, like we said, we don't want to ever look at language acquisition as a disability of any sort that, you know, so we have to be really clear. So I think like Colleen said, the ESL teachers have to collaborate pretty regularly with general ed teachers and special ed staff. And if it does get to the point for a special ed referral, sometimes decisions are made to evaluate that student in their home language to really get an accurate assessment as well. So we'll have to work through that as part of the process too.
So it was needed, if a student was on an IEP, for instance, they would, we would be able to have some sort of support in their native language to help out or hide it?
So yeah, I mean, usually, like, like we said, it's pretty rare that, that that referral would happen. But if it does, we, we first want to get an accurate assessment of the student to make the, the team decision that there is an area of disability and that it's not just an issue of, you know, a, a language, language acquisition. So that piece, I was saying that we, we typically will try as best we can to evaluate the student in their home language to, to make sure that we can really get a true assessment if there is a learning disability or any other area of need. And then if they are referred for special education, that's kind of case by case, team by team. But translation services are across the board. Yeah, I mean, I, I don't know if there, it's been pretty rare that you've, you've both supported from the ESL department and special ed department.
We do have some at the Dolberg, yeah, I always have some every year, definitely. So, so yeah, they receive their special ed services and then we try to work around that because, you know, they have to buy, you know, according to their IEP, they have to receive those services, X amount of minutes per day or per week. And then we, we try to work around this, that schedule so that they can get both services.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, so first of all, thank you both very much for preparing for tonight. This is, this is incredibly useful and, and informative. And of course, thank, you know, the rest of your team for the work you guys do every day. It, it certainly makes a big difference and it, and it, and it matters a lot, so thank you for that. I had a question on your slide going back to the identification of, of English language students. You had a bullet on that the parents can, can opt out. I'd like to get an appreciation around, around that somewhat out there. Is there a larger population of English language students in, in ELL families that, that do opt out? That we have, are our most, most free, freely participating?
No, I believe we only have maybe two or three district wide. I think two of them are at the high school. One at the high school?
One at the high school, none at the middle school.
I, I think we might have just went to two at the high school. Like for example, one student's situation was that they're.
I'm sorry, I don't, I'm not asking for any particular situations. That's not something that we, that I need to know or would ask.
I was just going to say in general.
Do we have a large population that opt out?
No.
So there's, there aren't members of the community that have decided really, you know, not to be served. We're really serving.
Yes.
Most, most of the students that are, that are in need of these types of services.
Right, and not to give any specific information, but just in general, usually.
I didn't need to drop, I just didn't want to go too far out there.
Usually when students opt out is for a specific reason. So, you know, one student at the high school might opt out because they are starting to work more and they might be, you know, attending school less. And so they might drop something like ELL. Or a student might also be special ed and have been in school for many, many years, maybe since kindergarten. And they don't feel, the parent might not feel like it's really necessary anymore. Those might be reasons. Some, some parents might just feel like it's not the right program and that's their right. We usually, as a default, we try to encourage everyone to accept the program. In fact, it's, it's an automatic that they're in the program. They have to kind of take a step, an extra step to opt out. And we do ask them to opt out every year to make sure that they know that they can always come back in every year and make sure that they, that they still want to make that decision year after year.
Because it seems apparent that your, the identification and placement is, is, is going, you know, quite well. That you've seen, that we've seen an increase in the number of students that are participating that, that, that are being assessed with, with this particular need, so that's great.
Yeah, and the students, the, the number of students that we have, we include those opt out students because we do still have to assess them every year, we have to give them that access test. And we still, we actually have to monitor their progress, similar to a former English learner. So we have to check in with the classroom teachers twice yearly and make sure that they're doing okay and kind of go from there.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you. I survived. I was nervous.
Have a great vacation.
Thanks.
So just to, just last, just a few comments. There's always a curiosity about kind of COVID positive cases and how we're doing there. Currently we have twenty-five positive cases and with three students in quarantine. We are continuing with our testing program. The Department of Elementary and Secondary Ed initially, when they, when they put out kind of the rapid testing option, the antigen test for, for students and families, when they, when they gave that information out, they said they're going to revisit this on April twenty-second. They have decided to extend that program and they will kind of keep track of, you know, numbers. We're still reporting weekly to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education our numbers. So they're keeping track the best they can statewide. We are seeing an uptick and so we appreciate that they are continuing to make rapid tests available. We will be sending tests home this week so that students will have them before they return to school, correct?
Yes.
Awesome, so, so that's just a, a quick update there. Also, some really wonderful news. The Wakefield Education Foundation, WEF, is bringing back the Celebration of Learning, which will be tomorrow night, tomorrow night at, at the Galvin. And so it, you know, it's just really an amazing way that the Wakefield Public Schools and, and WEF kind of helps us to recognize students and volunteers and teachers that really exemplify the, the core values of the Wakefield Public Schools and, and, and talk about, to be able to talk about ways that they've kind of gone above and beyond, right? To, to be recognized in this space. So that will be six-thirty to eight-thirty tomorrow evening, again, at Galvin, at, in the auditorium there. And so just, just a final note, and so we sent out an email last night letting the community know that we will be, we called off school on Friday. Again, we apologize to parents for the late notice of this. We, we do know this creates a specific difficulty for families, for working parents to kind of scour, you know, to kind of, to take this last minute news and then to try to get coverage for your family. So we apologize for that. Our, our difficulty is we just need an appropriate number of staff to be able to, to kind of open and run our, our buildings effectively and safely. And so that's our position. And so I appreciate the comments that were made earlier tonight by Erin. And I think where we do agree is that we do need to figure out kind of a better system so that this isn't a kind of a year over year problem. And, and I look forward to kind of working on that after the break. So that's it from me.
Any comments? I'm gonna, I'm gonna jump in on, on that comment and just say that I think it's really important that we do figure it, and it's not we, that you guys figure this out for next year. Because I know many of us heard from some Jewish families today and the concern about them kind of being in the crossfire of being blamed for this, you know, this, and, and we can't have kids and families feeling that way. So we need to figure this out. And I know it's complicated and certainly, I was at this table when we made this decision, never did I think that it would be this hard. And so my hope is that the committee can, can figure it out, can figure it out early and come to kind of an agreement that gets kids and families out of kind of the middle of being blamed for that something is just, that is not their fault. So I think, so that's, you're all set?
I'm all set.
Okay. Subcommittee reports. Finance and Facilities did not meet last week, we took a week off, but we are meeting this Thursday. High School Working Group, have you guys had any meetings in that? Could, we didn't, I didn't mention this one last week to get a report out, but I know we've been talking a lot about the high school, but I don't know if there's any kind of updates, no?
No, that I have not.
Okay. It's just moving along, right?
Well. There's a meeting last week.
Last Thursday.
Last Thursday evening.
Oh.
The, the PBC met to review the schematic design options and to review two cost estimates that they had for all three options in schematic design that they were presenting, which is part of the MSBA kind of sequence of work that they need to do. And they'll submit that information likely in the next two weeks.
So they just reviewed the two options?
The three options.
Sorry, three options, right, correct.
This time there are price tags, there are very, very round estimated price tags attached to it, which was the next step. So to your question, it is progressing on pace and on time. But there's, no new options are on the table than what was presented to us two, three, four weeks ago.
Correct.
Do you guys know that the timing on when the PBC determines which one they're going to bring forward to the town?
I think the recommendation was made last week. I think that that was one of the things that they were working on. And one of the drivers was really looking at the cost, you know, and just doing an analysis of, of the options. For those that might be watching and don't remember, the option one was simply to, to bring the, the existing building up to code for kind of ADA accessibility and kind of HVAC and, and things like that, right? And so that was option one. Option two was to do a renovation addition to the existing structure. And option three was to design a new building. And so the cost analysis for really two and three were, were virtually identical. So I believe that, you know, I think that they were leaning in, I think that they were leaning toward a new building if, all things being equal, if the costs are the same. The difference between two and three is two, doing the addition renovation, you have considerably, considerable time added to the construction and considerable disruption because you would have kids in modulars and kind of being, kind of going back and forth as different parts of the building were kind of being, kind of taken offline and being brought online.
That's probably way more information than you need.
No, that was, that was actually what I was looking for, so.
Okay.
Okay. Labor and personnel?
So we have, we have been meeting through with a, a negotiation with a Unit C pretty actively for the last couple of months. We were in a, in a, in a pretty good, pretty good space with Unit C. The last two meetings that we had intended to hold, which Unit C had asked for some, for some time to review proposals, you know, with a little more detail. And the meeting that we were intended to hold last night, there was, there was an illness in one of the, one of the bargaining, you know, leaders. And they asked for some time to allow the team or allow the individual to, to have time with family. So the next scheduled meeting with Unit C is on Monday, April 25th, right? That we, right as we come back from vacation. So, and there will certainly be more to, more to report. We've begun negotiations with, with AFSMI, the food service team, food service workers, and that, that has begun well. And we'll be putting on the calendar dates for the rest of the AFSMI teams in the coming weeks.
Mike, Student Services?
Yeah, we ended up canceling our meeting, I guess, two weeks ago, partly due to some of the labor negotiation stuff, some conflicts Doug and I had. So we are meeting tomorrow for you guys, today for me. It's a little weird, so we'll be meeting, getting back on to that point.
Okay, and then Kevin?
Yeah, thank you. The Policy and Communications Subcommittee met yesterday on Zoom. Continuing our work on a number of policies and so we fully expect probably at the next meeting to bring forth at least two. We have a really good draft of the sexual harassment Title IX policy with a lot of input from our council. So we went over that in a lot of detail and it's updated nicely. It addresses a lot of the changes through OCR, et cetera. So we'll be happy to, to place that on the table with our next meeting or so. Another one that's also ready is our digital use policy, which I know Stephen and Dr. Lyons were heavily involved in, particularly with Mr. Weiner. So that was, very happy to bring that forward as well. And then we were joined actually at the start of the meeting by Florence, by Florence Martin and Erin Kresos, who provided some feedback on the conflict resolution policy. If you remember, we put on the table a couple of meetings ago and then are pausing on it. So we're looking through that feedback, discussed it a tiny bit at the meeting, we'll do so more. And so that policy will continue to evolve a little bit. And then we'll, again, we'll place it back on the table for consideration. And then our next kind of task is to look at the bullying prevention policy, which we've been on, keeping on our agenda the whole time. And we are scheduled to meet again two weeks from today at four o'clock.
Okay. Future meetings, so the next meeting is not going to be until Tuesday, May 3rd. We're going to take off next week, obviously, because of school vacation week. The following week would have been our regular week, but it's election night. We had opted not to meet then. In past years, we would have had a Thursday meeting after election, but that's a lot, especially for anybody who's running or who's new. And so we, we decided to push kind of the, the next meeting to be that first Tuesday of, of May. So that'll be May 3rd. So with that, we'll do kind of final comments. Mike requested that he go first.
Sure, you know, two weeks from today, today, today for you guys, yesterday for me. Glad I don't have to say that anymore. So I, I wish I could make the comments interim with all of you now because I think it's been a great year. Enjoyed very much working with all of you. Obviously, the composition of the committee will change at least somewhat. So certainly, best wishes to Tom and Amy in your pursuit of getting back on the committee again. But certainly, I wanted to point out the role that Suzie has had with our committee. Any of you, I think probably Kevin and Tom can commiserate. The job of Chair is, you know, I, it's hard, you know, there's a lot of work with school committee. It doesn't even touch the work involved with the chair. And Suzie, you've thrown your heart and soul into this. And, you know, I appreciate for my child, like for all the kids, so just wanted to thank you. That's it.
Thanks, Mike. Amy?
Sure. So I have a few things. One, for any high schoolers that are looking for jobs this summer, DCR is hiring lifeguards. They need them desperately. So if you are 16 or over and you want to learn to, to be a lifeguard, go check out mass.gov and you can do a search for DCR lifeguards. They're hiring a ton right now. Kind of just to jump, to piggyback what Mike said. Suzie, thank you for your, your time. I know that you and I have not always seen eye to eye on issues, but I appreciate you listening to me and, and hearing my side of things. So that's been helpful, thank you. I hope this isn't my last meeting, I'm not done yet. With that being said, I just encourage everybody to go out in two weeks to vote on the 26th at the Galvin, all day. Be there. And that's all I have, but if it is my last meeting, thank you to everybody else. It's been a great, a great year with everybody and, and I really enjoy serving the community, so thank you.
Stephen?
Yeah, thank you for TJ and everyone coming from the, the Dolberg. Again, just love hearing the students. It's the fun part of this. And thank you for the, the presentation from the EL. I know that directly comes back to my house, like I was saying earlier. And, and I know the work that they're doing and I, I really appreciate that community that, that's built. And I can see, I, I see that student at least every other day and he seems glad to be here. And so every student that comes before us and says how much they mean, how much it means for them to be in this district. I know the work that we're doing is, is really good. And so it's credit to, to you Doug and to your team, to them, and even to some of the, some of the things that people around this table sit and do. Thank you Suzie for being Chair, for being in this position for three years. I'm sure it feels like a lifetime. And, and even this past year. But I know that you've, you've chaired with just a real, an evenness and without being afraid to sort of know when the emotional, you know, parts are there and it's been hard. And so, and you've handled it amazingly. So thank you for, for being Chair and you'll be missed.
Thanks, thanks. Tom?
Thank you. I guess I'd like to also thank the, the leaders of Unit A for coming tonight to share their thoughts and concerns and agree with what you had mentioned earlier, both Suzie and Doug, about our needing to bring some, some resolution to, you know, this important issue around the calendar and how we treat, how we treat the Good Friday holiday or the Good Friday Day. So certainly thank, thank them again for bringing it forward. I, I too, like, like my colleague, if, if tonight happens to be my last meeting as well, I want to thank the community for years of, of support and it has been a pleasure to serve with the, on the committee, serve with each of you and committees in the past. My, I don't believe that my work is done, so we'll see, we'll see what happens in, in, in two weeks. But notwithstanding that, I very much want to appreciate you. You have been an outstanding colleague and friend and leader through some very difficult times, very difficult days and nights and weekends. And it is evident to anyone in the, in the community, regardless of where anyone stands on issues or, or, or concerns, that you pour your heart and soul and passion and love into this work. And the Wakefield School Committee and the Wakefield Public Schools are better off because you were with us. And I want to thank you and I'm sure the, the community will as, as the time goes along. But you will be missed. Regardless of whether I'm here or not, the committee will miss you, the school district will, will miss you. And so I just want to say thank you for, for everything.
Thanks. Kevin?
Like I did last week, I want to start, kind of closing comments by paying respects to a longtime educator here in Wakefield. I didn't have Mr. Merchant in class, but he was kind of a legend as well. We've now lost a couple over the last few weeks. But he was a longtime English teacher here, but involved in a number of different things across town. And one of the most meaningful to me at least, like, since I like theater and the arts, was he and Ron Chibarro are, started the Wakefield Repertory Theater, which decades later still exists and still is an important venue for the arts here in the community. But he did a whole number of other things from the Scholarship Foundation to adult, or I forget the title. It was like an education program, evening education, community education, a number of different things. So for him and his family, just want to express my condolences. I want to also mention Tom and Amy and thank you for all your work. You know, this is, there's really big, important issues, I think, before the school committee. And, you know, knowing that, you know, we have a relatively youthful in terms of experience committee, I think, to have people who have served, I think is really important. And I encourage people to, to vote, to continue some of the experience that I think is really critical, to continue to move our community forward. So I want to wish you both well. I've enjoyed working with both of you and look forward to potentially having the opportunity to continue to, to do so. Suzie, like everybody else, I mean, I, I did get to serve as Chair eons ago. It was a cakewalk compared to what you have experienced. And I had an open meeting complaint, so I had to deal with that. And that was nothing compared to what I think now is kind of the current climate I, I think we're in. I think we're in a heightened environment. I think there's a lot of emotions, I think there's lots of opinions and there's social media and I didn't have to deal with that. So no matter what you say, no matter how you say it, you know, there's someone potentially going to comment on that. And there was no shortage, I think, of really, really difficult topics. And I think you navigated it extremely well and I'm just really appreciative of your leadership, of your desire to just focus on what's right, even, you know, the, the side bombs that are coming by a variety of people who think they can do it better. So I appreciate what you've brought, what I've learned from watching you. And we're going to definitely miss you, being on the committee. And then lastly, as the holidays approach, I know, I just want to wish those that celebrate, whether it's Easter, Passover, Ramadan, I just hope it's a time of peace, time with family and a time of prayer and relaxation in whatever way is meaningful for people. So just want to wish everyone in the, in the school community well as we approach break and I look forward to kind of re-engaging after some time. And I hope you all get a little bit of a respite here on the senior leadership. So thank you.
Thanks, Kevin. Amy?
So I'm just going to thank Suzie tonight. I always get excited when you meet someone in the community who likes to talk about the schools as much as I do and I found that in Suzie when she ran her first time. She actually was really open and still is, one that will listen to different sides and her perspective will change, which is a nice quality. And she does all her research and she's bright. I mean, we, she almost figured out the formula, the education formula before it was the Student Opportunity Act. And so yeah, it's, it's been great getting to know you and I know, I know you will still see you at the table. So thank you very much for your service for the past three years.
Thanks, Amy. Appreciate it. Go ahead.
So again, just 30 seconds or less. You know, district administrators cannot be successful, cannot be effective in their role unless they have a very significant relationship with not just the school committee, but especially the chair. And I know that we speak probably every day. And I want to thank you for your grace, your, your energy that you put into this work, the care that you put into this work. I think it's easy to, to, to kind of watch from the outside looking in and, and critique this work. But I don't know that it's ever been more difficult. And from the administration, from all of our teachers and for all of our staff and especially from the district administrators, we want to say thank you, so.
Yeah. And we got you. Got some flowers, huh? Got you a little something. Thank you, thank you so much. Sure. All right, so I have a couple of like housekeeping updates and then I do have some prepared remarks. So first of all, Wizard of Oz tickets are for sale at the high school. So that is happening, the, is it three weekends? I know it's the first two weekends in May, may even be three weekends. But I would definitely encourage people to, to sign up for tickets and, and go see that show. We've, we've always really enjoyed going to the high school, big production in the spring and they just do such a great job. So really looking forward to that.
May 6th through 14th.
Okay, perfect. So it goes over two weekends and like, so it's like Thursdays?
I think so.
Yeah.
I just got, that was the best I could get.
Okay. And then my role on the Environmental Sustainability Committee, I've forgotten to mention the last couple of meetings. And so I need to say it here because somebody's going to have to take it over as liaison after I'm, after I'm gone. We have spoke, they have spent a ton of time talking about the high school project. That team is really committed to kind of trying to influence the, the high school project in any way that they can around being focused on sustainability. They announced at our last meeting that recycling is kind of up and going at the Galvin, which has been a long time coming. You know, definitely are interested in the use of styrofoam at the, at the schools, right? So that, that will continue to come around. But just a reminder that you guys kind of need to, to figure out kind of who's going to step in there. And so I do have, they're kind of long and I'm hopefully going to get through them. So tonight is my last full committee meeting and I'd like to say a few words about the last three years. First, I wanted to thank my six committee mates who have sat at this table with me in many, me, you've sat at the table with me and in many executive session and subcommittee meetings, doing the work that this group is responsible for. It has not been easy work, but I think we've collaborated well and worked well together, even when we didn't always agree. I also wanted to thank administration for their tireless efforts over the last two years. This committee knows how hard you've all worked, the sacrifices you've made in your personal lives to be available early morning for meetings, work all day and very often attend multiple meetings a week at night. It's been a pleasure working with all of you at this table and I appreciate how much you've all taught me over these last years. Three years ago, when I sat down at this table, I thought I knew what it would be like to serve, but man, I had no idea what I was going to experience. While I came to the table focused on the issues that had to do with my personal experience, I quickly learned that there were different things to consider and understand when it came to my role in the committee. My platform issues remained important, but I quickly broadened my perspective on what I needed to consider and think about. The most important thing I learned was that decisions had to be made thinking about all students, not just some. And with this came hard decisions that people didn't like. Another important thing I learned over the last three years was just how amazing our teachers and staff are. While I knew this from my personal experience, I got to witness it in a much bigger way with a seat at this table. For three years, I've seen teachers and school leaders present the amazing work that they're doing for and with our students. I watched the entire district pivot time and again during COVID to do the very best job they could supporting our kids. Was it done perfectly? No, it wasn't, but it was done with heart and soul and commitment to our students, our staff and our families. In my mind, you can't ask for much more. My hope for the next committee is that the public remembers you are all volunteers, spending five to 10 hours a week, sometimes more, serving the community and its students. While people may feel like they're not being listened to because a decision or a vote didn't go the way they wanted, in fact, they are being heard. It's the job of the committee to listen to all voices and make decisions that serve all students and staff based on the information we have. As committee members, we're expected to know more than the average community, uh, community member about the topics we're asked to consider and vote on. It's our job to learn as much as we can about a topic, talk to stakeholders and then vote based on all aspects of the issue. I have been called a villain, a child abuser and a criminal based on my support of wearing masks. I have been called unhinged based on my reaction to the panel of the Native Americans who spoke in the spring of 2021. I have been referred to as a joke on Facebook while chairing a recent meeting. I've been accused of trying to protect my salary and pension as a school committee member. Seriously. My character has been questioned right here in this room and I have been accused in the local paper of taking school, taking on school matters behind closed doors. the local paper of taking school, taking on school matters behind closed doors. The truth is that the anger, criticism, and insults took its toll. So my school committee service comes to an end in two weeks. My hope is civility might return to our community, and people will pause before they post on social media or email their criticism of the volunteers who serve this town, not just this committee, the whole damn town. Instead, consider reaching out to set up time to talk about your concerns. I welcomed tough conversations with folks who felt differently than I did, and I suspect that most of you, committee mates, would feel the same way. It's critical to understand different perspectives, but people need to share their feelings respectfully. On the flip side, my time on the school committee also led to meeting many great people. Parents from across the district who emailed me thoughts, reached out on Facebook, or sent encouraging text messages during difficult times. I am lucky to have met you and appreciate the support you provided over the years. It is meant more than you know. I am really looking forward to spending the next three years with my kids as they finish high school and how to head off to college. But I will be playing, paying close attention to what is happening in our schools. And don't be surprised if you see me at that table at some point, speaking during public comment. Thank you for the experience. It surely will not be forgotten. Thank you. All right. And with that, my, do I not have a gavel tonight? I was like really going to use the gavel tonight. I think we need a motion?
We do. I move the school committee adjournments meeting of Tuesday, April 12, 2022.
Motion made, seconded, discussion? Seeing none, all in favor. All right. Have a good night, guys.
Good night.
Good morning, Mike.